Stand for the pledge of allegiance. Mike, you don't have to.
Oh, you will.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, God, and our individuality. A call in the meeting order. We'll call.
Hey, Mayor Westergaard.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Mulder.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Wolton.
Yes.
Councilor Beckman will be absent tonight.
Anybody for public forum? Curtis.
Hi. Pardon me, my mouth is dry and I'm always nervous about public speaking. Got something to read to you tonight, which is the worst kind of thing, but we'll get through it. It'll only take a couple of minutes. Many parts of what I'm about to review are excerpted from an editorial by Emma Nye, doctor of athletic training at Grandview University in Des Moines. The piece is entitled "The Fellowship of Christian Athletes," FCA, is an international nonprofit Christian sports ministry rooted in hatred and homophobia. The FCA operates according to a written policy, includes points collectively referred to as statement of faith. The FCA requires its leaders to agree with its vision, mission, and statement of faith, and applicants must also agree to its sexual purity statement. The statement of faith and the sexual purity statement are one of the roots of the FCA's bigotry and anti-LGBTQ hatred lie. One of the organization's points within its statement of faith reads, quote, "God instituted marriage between one man and one woman as the foundation of the family and the basic structure of human society. For this reason, we believe that marriage is exclusively the union of one man and one woman," end quote. I want to circle back and remind you quick that the FCA requires its leaders to agree with the statement of faith. After agreeing to the organization nine points within the statement of faith, applicants and leaders must also agree to the sexual purity statement. The portion of the sexual purity statement we're concerned with today reads, quote, "God desires his children to lead pure lives of holiness. The Bible is clear in teaching on sexual sin, including sex outside of marriage and homosexual acts. Neither heterosexual sex outside of marriage nor any homosexual act constitute an alternative lifestyle acceptable to God," end quote. Just got to circle back and remind you that the FCA requires its leaders to agree with the sexual purity statement that they just read. These anti-gay statements effectively ban all LGBTQ student athletes and coaches from all leadership positions within the FCA, as well as highlighting the notion that to be a member of the LGBTQ community is also to be a sinner. I find it incredibly ironic that members of the FCA must agree that God created all human beings in his image and that every person should be treated with love, dignity, and respect, but then in the same breath say that if you are LGBTQ, God's love doesn't apply to you. On April 22nd, 2022, one of the people authorized to post on the East SAC County Girls Track and Field Facebook page posted the following, quote, "I am one of the coaches helping get FCA," parentheses, "Fellowship of Christian Athletes," parentheses, "started in our school," end quote. What this means is that according to this post, East SAC County School has at least two coaches that, hopefully unknowingly, are helping to bring bigotry and hatred to East SAC County School. I say unknowingly because it would be extremely deserving if they were doing it on purpose. But again, I circle back to they have to agree to these statements in order to be part of the leadership of FCA that they're trying to bring in. I share this information because I want all the people who are against bigotry and hatred of our LGBTQ friends and family to know that this vile cancer is working its way into East SAC County School right now, right here in Lakeview, Iowa. Thanks for listening.
I have one thing that I want to, I want to read this to the council before we start. This is a card I got from the East SAC County School District. It says, "Mayor Westergaard, City Administrator Scott Peterson of Lakeview City Council. I want to send a personal thank you for hiring Police Chief Chris Jokins. Much like the former chief, Brandon Renon, Chris Jokins has been a visible presence at the high school, and I want to thank you for taking the time to hire him, hire good people, and also to thank the chief for being a vital member of the East SAC School's high school team. Sincerely, respectfully, Kevin Litter." Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Sometimes you don't hear much good news. He just did. Okay, consent agenda. Any additions or corrections? Motion to approve.
I'll go.
Second.
Second.
We'll call.
Wolton.
Yes.
Mulder.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Okay, the first item is we have to pay the community club.
Yeah, so.
Do you have a year?
Yeah, so we have, the city has made this payment regularly for several years. Of course, things have changed a little bit now in regards to our auditors and utilizing public funds for private nonprofit purposes. So there has to be some public good that comes out of this and really needs to be documented then too. There's documentation in the packet then about the type of advertising that's been done for the community, as well as our marketing coordinator and event coordinator that the city would help to pay these costs for. The city has had budgeted $15,000 for this. If this were to proceed, it would ask that you authorize the payment. And we also need to note that there is public good that comes of that. And Dave talked about that a little bit, about maybe getting into a different type of agreement.
The Secretary of State's office has issued some guidelines for these types of payments to nonprofits and has emphasized that we have to require documentation of the public services that they provide to the general public, not just to a specific group. In reviewing the advertising packet and the other activities of the club, I have no doubt that we would pass audit, but we do have to go through the formality of drafting a memorandum of agreement which sets forth our expectations of this group and what we would require as far as documentation and a couple of other things to demonstrate that this is not money just being paid to some private nonprofit. This is money being spent for the public good. And so we need to document that as pretty much the requirement, rather than as past practices in many of the communities in this area, the sheriff's reserve, deputy reserve organization in Lakeside, for example. For years, we've contributed to them for equipment. It's expensive to have unpaid reserve deputies. Obviously, they provide a public service, so it's just a question of documenting it. So I would suggest that if a motion is made to make this payment, that the motion also contain language to the effect that it's subject to the approval of an acceptable memorandum of agreement to the city attorney and to the directors of this particular organization.
Could I say something? You know, I'm okay with all of that and that, but there's, Connie does a lot of city work, which came up several years ago. You know, that Scott has her do a lot of posting, grant writing. I don't even know what all she's helped you with over the years. And at one point, we decided to give her a raise and have it come from the city portion. You know, and it just, I just wonder about, this line is so blurred now, and I'm not sure she gets acknowledged or paid accurately for the work she does for the city. I don't know whether this, now this documentation will separate that better for you.
I don't know, but it did include that then in the packet then too. So Connie has, she has always been real good about giving a monthly report to the community club officers about the type of work that was done, okay? So we're included in that loop now too, that we've received the monthly report of activities. So, and it details everything then that she's done as far as anything related to the club or anything related to the community or anything related to the city.
Because she does work for the city, that wouldn't be work for the community club, really. But it gets hard to separate it anyway.
Do we need a motion to authorize the payment?
I got one, one thing I'd like to bring up. If she's being paid to do this work for the city, back in January, our little organization, the Lakeview Concerned Citizens, one of our committee members posted something on the community club webpage and within five minutes, it was brought down. I think if the city's paying for this, everybody should have their fair post on it and not one person regularly.
I don't think it was, it was the community center page, wasn't it?
True.
Was it the Lakeview page?
It wasn't the Lakeview.
It was the community center page.
Even so, it's a community project and it's being funded, TIF money. I don't think one person should be able to bring another person's comment off.
I, I think that gets complicated because I don't, the community center, I don't know.
We would view that, Mike, as a, it's a private, private page for a private group, you know, of the, not necessarily a private group, but it's a group working towards a project, not necessarily a city.
But it's funded by the city, so it's, should be recognized by all community, or all members of the community. It shouldn't be refereed over by one person. Everybody's comments should be equal.
But if you guys had your own page, then what would you think of that?
I guess we don't have our own page, so I can't tell them that.
Well, I guess we'll have to. Curtis, are you alone on comments? Go ahead. I think it would be amazing if Mike's group got a Facebook page that we could all comment on. Thank you. Okay, we need a motion to authorize the payment with the motion to include whatever the agreement that Dave said.
Yeah, to authorize payment, payment of $15,000 to the Lakeview Community Club. Determine the community marketing provided by the community club to be for the public good and authorize payment subject to the approval of the acceptable memorandum of an understanding.
Is that, is that, good way of putting it, Dave?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Second. I'll second it. We'll call.
Olner.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Wolton.
Yep.
Frank.
Yes.
Okay, what do you talk about the city shop property and the trail?
Yeah, and that's what this, this document is that was handed out to you here just right before the meeting. It's, this couch then has an offer to buy. You just want to go talk through that, Dave?
Right, there's been some negotiation going on between Scott and Mayor and Vern Van Meveren and myself. The terms contained in this offer would be an offer from the city to obtain a quitclaim deed from the Van Meveren family ownership, owners, to the parcel that was formerly the subject of the contract, which is where the city salt shed sits, along with the east half of the railroad lightway that's adjacent there too. And then parcel two would be 15 feet lying east of the center line of the main track, which is now removed for the Chicago Northwestern Railway, to the north line of the Fifth Street of Lakeview. So it would be all the way from the north to the south to Fifth Street. It would establish a 15-foot corridor for city use. I think I put it in as a purpose would be for ingress, egress, trailway, and the city maintenance storage. Price has been requested of $11,000, of which $3,000 would go for the trail and the $8,000 would go for the parcel on which the salt shed sits. The paragraph 20 of this agreement, this is an offer that has to be accepted in order for it to become a binding contract, so it's a purchase offer. And this offer, if accepted, will replace and fulfill any of the obligations that were set forth in the real estate contract that was entered into in November 16th, 2021. I spoke with Mr. Van Meveren and he indicated that if the city made this offer, it would be acceptable.
Didn't we already make an offer and it was accepted verbally or something?
Pardon?
Didn't we already make an offer and we had a gentleman's agreement of $3,000 once?
That's why we're putting this in writing.
Can I, can I ask a question? Because I don't understand, and I guess, I'm sure you guys all know, but a lot of people don't know. So in November, the price for the trail was $2,000. The price for the salt shed was 25. Then we found out, two days later, we owned the salt shed and we'd already paid the $2,000. Is that right? So where, how did we get there to now then? What happened? I mean, the price of the trail is now higher, but we already paid for it. But now we're buying the salt shed that we own, or don't we own it?
That's the contention is that, you know, Mr. Van Meveren would still certainly contend that he would.
He owns.
That property.
But wasn't there documentation at the courthouse, or that is just, it's just a legal mess?
That would, that would be the point, is that it would be a legal mess.
I see.
It's truly a legal mess.
Yeah, I'm sure it is.
And, you know, it's, if the council were to look at making this offer to do this, it is just simply too dispensive, the issue. You know, because otherwise we can, we could, if you don't want to proceed down this, I guess the other thing that I would encourage the council to do is to authorize some additional legal help to define ownership.
Dave, in the state law, a contract can be, does it have to be in writing? Can it be just verbal? Can it be with just a handshake? Is that all legal, or does it have to be all in a written contract?
If the oral agreement is partially performed and relied upon by one of the other parties and is specific enough to be enforced such that the court can determine what the terms of the agreement were, then an oral agreement is enforceable. But it tends to be subservient to a written agreement. In which case, in this particular case, we have a written agreement, and then we have a subsequent oral agreement, which I am now trying to put back into a written agreement.
There's a little difference in the price though.
Yeah, not the same.
Written and oral, that's, I guess I, I understood it that as long as, as long as we were able to verbally come to a, he said $3,000 he'd walk away from us, is from what I understood. Correct me if I'm wrong, if I misunderstood. So I guess, I don't know, like I said, I'm sure we got it on tape somewhere.
Yeah, pull the minutes on that, and that's, you know, that is what it says, that it'd be $3,000. $3,000.
Just, you know, I took Vern at his word, so I guess that's, that's important to me, so.
Is, I've talked to Vern, and it's been a couple of weeks now, but is there anything in here that he was going to turn around and donate back to the library and the fire department in Little Legion?
He didn't want that brought up.
Didn't want that in here. Okay.
He has certainly mentioned that, and that was, that was the intent of his.
He's mentioned that to me too, but he didn't not want, first of all, to be solicited by various other people about donating money and.
Okay. I just didn't see it here, and I.
It's not in writing, Mike.
And I had talked to him.
The question is, what would the council like to do?
If this agreement is going to free up, I mean, I'm, I'm sure there's legal work to be done to make sure everything's put where it needs to be, but if this is going to give the city all outright to owning the property, I make a motion that we do it.
Is there a second? We'll call.
Okay, Frank.
Yes.
Wolton.
Yep.
Thank you.
No.
Mulder.
No.
If the motion fails, our next step would be, Dr. Vernon.
You know, and I just want to talk to them today, it was, it was just, you know, of course, he captured that as, basically as take or leave a deal, that if the council would choose not to, not to enter into that, that he was going to pursue other options and would, would look at the sale of that, of that trail property and potential other actions on the, on the salt shed property.
What happens to the money you gave him?
That is a, that is the, that is the first down payment amount on the, on the contract for salt shed property, and that was, that contract included the salt shed property only.
I don't think that's what the minutes were for. It was for the trail.
I would caution against further discussion of pending litigation. It's, that should be the subject of the closed meeting discussion, which would be strategy.
Go ahead, Curtis. Has a lawsuit been filed?
No, no.
So won't you then?
We don't know what he's going to do next.
Which is literally not a lawsuit right now, we're even strategizing about.
I didn't hear the question.
I asked if there was a lawsuit that has been filed.
It has been filed, but it's pending.
What does pending mean?
Pending means it's been threatened, and based upon the actions of the council tonight, we can expect a lawsuit to be filed.
That's not saying as a lawsuit has been filed. You could talk about it freely tonight because you're not strategizing about a pending lawsuit. File a lawsuit.
But we could also choose not to.
You can choose not to.
We're just going to.
Right.
We'll wait for IDK's call.
Yep.
Okay, we have a reservation from Brad Lent that we have to approve.
I know it just mentions Brad on the, on the agenda, but we would include this on, on the action then also, which was, I would assume just given to the chief today then?
I have work in and out.
About Colin Johnson also, and we kind of knew this was in the works, that Colin was looking at a, at another position also. So Colin would, would resign. Also, you see in, within his letter, the last day is May 29th, and Brad's last day of work would be around May 15th.
Our motion would be to accept the reservation of both Brad Lent and.
I'll make the motion to accept it.
Can you second it?
Yeah.
We'll call.
Okay, Mulder.
Yes.
Wolton.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Want to talk a little bit about recruitment there, chief?
Yeah. It's going to be tough. We kind of see what county's going through. They really pushed their testing back twice now, and they got one really good applicant. And I know that because he's my son. But that's all they got, and that was after pushing it back twice. So the biggest thing that we're going to, you know, and we're a smaller community. We obviously pay a lot less than what the county starts out at. You know, we're starting out at 42, they're starting out at 52, and they're looking at a big raise come July. I mean, in my opinion, I think one of the big things that we need to do is look at increasing the pay across the board for these guys, starting them out at a higher wage and try and get good applicants in here. You know, it kind of is what it is. I kind of expected Brad was going to leave when I started, and I kind of figured Colin was going to leave too. He'd been talking about it for a while. Both of them are really good, really good individuals, and I think everybody should, you know, see Brad thanking for what he's done for this city because he's actually been here. And one thing about Brad is he's, he's helped me out too. He helped train me when I worked in Madison, so.
So what's the magic number?
Yeah.
I think they should be at 80% of what my salary is, so if you look at that, they need to be at about 57 for the top pay. I think we should start out at 50 and then go up from there.
Like certified individuals?
Certified would be, obviously start out higher. You know, non-certified, obviously can start at the bottom, but yeah.
But there's no short academy anymore.
No short academy, that's out. So they all got to go the long course. The one thing about, you got to realize about certified guys as well is really good certified guys aren't moving. So you're getting other people, other people's problems if you, if we get a certified guy. We might luck out, you know, you never know. We might luck out and get somebody that's, that's decent, coming in to do a good job, but I wouldn't hold our breath on that either. So I'd probably be looking at hiring two non-certified guys if we get the applicants.
What, what's the cost to send seven of the three academy?
Last, well, we sent Colin to the short academy. His, the amount of his contract is $14,000. Short academy is twice as much, so it's going to be pushing 30.
And he has to pay about?
Two.
And each.
30 each.
By the time, by the time you consider everything associated with that.
Has Colin put in his time?
No.
So he has to pay us back?
He would reimburse that, yeah.
But it can be a very long process, because that, who's the last guy? He's been paying us 100 bucks a month for over a year.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
He gets to pay for a long time.
Long time.
Yeah, it's not a quick return unless the guy leaves here and goes somewhere else and they buy out the contract.
So our starting base is 42 right now?
Roughly, yeah.
Roughly?
Yeah, or.
I think the top pay is 50, somewhere around there.
How do we handle offering more money without, can we do anything tonight, or can we come back with a plan, or?
Well, I think you certainly would, if that's something you want to take a look at, we would need to have a plan in order to do that.
Funding.
You know, the only, a couple of things. Of course, the, the wages are set by the, by the union contract, so we do have, have wages that are set in there already. We have chosen to pay above scale if needed to get somebody here, but it was, it was more, more due to the individual, not, not anything due to the position. So you look, there's opportunities to pay above scale if need be. And then we've also utilized a, a bonus program, a hiring bonus type of.
Sign up.
Yeah, of a program then too.
County has tried that too with the bonuses, and it's obviously not fair enough very well, so. But like, it's just tough, it's just tough to be in long course right now. People aren't wanting to get into it, and the ones that are, aren't moving or, you know, like I said, you're getting somebody else's problems. It's just, it's just really tough right now, so. I know if we get them in, I have confidence in myself to be able to motivate them and get them where they want to be, and I think they'd really enjoy it here. I think they'd have a lot of fun. I mean, Colin's kind of exploded over the last couple of weeks. I mean, I know we, everybody's seen what's happened out in, out in the community out here, and he's a big part of that, you know? So he's on board. Colin, I thought was there. He just, he's got other ideas, so.
At least we can start the process of advertising.
Yeah.
Then we can work on some money.
I could get somebody in as soon as possible, that would help, yeah. I do have a reserve guy that I've been talking to that would like to come and do some reserve time, so I don't know what, you know, what the feeling is or how that process works here either.
We'll have to get him.
Yeah.
We can, we're only two guys, so.
Now, we're not going anywhere.
No, busy time.
Busy time of year.
That's the other thing, you know, with everything coming up, we wanna try to have in place, actually kinda know a little bit about what they're doing.
Should we put a committee in place to look into that, or?
Yes, you can, you can do what you, what you'd like to, you know, I'd hope we certainly can work with the police chief and defer to the police chief on, on all that stuff then too.
When we bring, when we, when we talk to them, we can see what their expectations are, and then we can figure out what we have to do, either get them or let them go.
You gotta get some applicants first.
Yeah, we gotta get some applicants.
That's the first step.
Yeah, let's get them and see how we do.
Because we could always have a meeting, discuss what, what we need to do. That's, we gotta just see what kinda.
I mean, just, yeah, so the proposal would be that, that we would actually follow kind of the same advertising model that we followed for the chief, that we would advertise locally and really just looking at the, at the resort and the, and the tri-county, and then we'd also put it out there on Indeed. And, and see what's out there in the world. It could be, 'cause the best results that, that they would likely have actually would come from word of mouth. And other officers talking with other officers.
The one thing I don't wanna do is be a farm for other departments. And that's kinda what we've seen when you cycle through, I mean, I don't know how many they've gone through in the last four years, I know since I've been in up the county, I think everybody's new right now, I don't think there's anybody that's been here longer than four years, so. I mean, that, that's my big thing, is we don't wanna be a farm. We don't, we don't wanna send these guys to academy and then them go be one or two years down the road somewhere else. We wanna try and hold them at least that. You know, in my opinion, five good years, I mean, you get, you get their contracts paid off in an extra year, I think you're doing good.
Well, let's advertise and see what we get. And get your reserve guy, whatever you gotta do.
Yeah, that, uh.
Yeah, I'll get.
Yes, what, what I would, would propose that we, we would do as far as advertising is that we get the advertising out here real quick with the, the notion that we would advertise and keep the positions open until they're filled. And I would, I would look at the first review of, of applications to be what would be about one, two, three weeks from now? Twenty, thirty?
Twenty-third, maybe?
And it takes about, it takes about that long to get the word out to people, so.
Yeah, I'll, we got a Facebook account for the city.
We do?
Okay, I'll probably get a flyer maybe that we could throw on there too. That seems to work pretty, pretty decent.
Open until filled and first review on the 20, 20 thirteenth, okay?
Good luck.
That's why you hired me.
Yeah, that's right, you bet.
Oh, you got it. Yeah.
Okay, how about the underground, underground electric project, is that going?
Yeah, it, yeah, if, uh, I guess I would just, we'll talk through this here real briefly, but just open to questions really more than anything, we are looking for an authorization to proceed with the, with the project. And I guess if you can look at that cost estimate that, that was on your, on your desk here tonight, that tells you about that. So I don't know what to do with mine.
Don't share it.
Forget it. So let's just talk through what these projects are and, and jump in Dean when you, when I misspeak or something on that. Okay, Fifth Street Light is that, is that light at Reflections? And this would then propose to actually bury a new service to that, to that line, it comes from the, from the alley and then past the, the side of the art gallery there.
Is that the strobe light?
That's true. And boy, they've been struggling with that as far as trying to get that figured out, they just haven't, so they would put a new service into it. Sparky Street Light, that would be a, a new street light that would go there at the top of the hill by the new entrance. Okay, it's proposed that the existing one by the old entrance would remain there also. And Denison Beach, this is, uh, that large construction project out there. I can't remember the name, but there's, there's a big, a big housing addition under construction right now, and they need to put in their new service then to that, this is their, the homeowners requested that that would be done, so you see it says paid by owner, and it's a homeowner's request to do this. Jeff Frank, another one of these where we are, would be, this would be Jeff Frank's place and out there at Jim Stoddens that area, so it's taken some of the aerial stuff down, burying, burying that. And again, it's a request from the, from the property owners, paid for by the property. Dan Carstens would like to have their service buried from, from the, from the main line to their meter pole. And again, they're interested in doing that, but if there's a lot of benefit to the city in, in this case, then too, it runs right through a bunch of trees that we sure would like to address. So we'd work a deal with them where the owner pays for the cable and we would pay for the wiring. You see the shaven addition. This, this is the one area, excuse me, two areas, where, where we do three-phase, so this would have three-phase going in back of the, of the vet clinic, back of the, back of the car wash there and over to the shaven area. And really preparing then for, for future development down there also. Um, the, okay, the south provost by that lift station, that's out there at the hanky land. And it's on page seventeen, kinda shows that a little bit. So where there's part, part of a, of a mile of aerial line, basically, some of that's buried, so like the, where the, where the, the new hanky addition would be on that, on that gravel line, gravel road, it's burying that line for about the the depth of that new addition. And then removing the aerial line going over to the lift station. And burying that stuff going over to the lift station then there too, so. Three-phase power there and setting a new transformer base and setting a new sectionalizer out there then too. And then the last one would be, the service out there at the landing at East Shore, this would get the power to all of the area out there at the, at the landing. Total contracted cost is eighty-eight thousand four thirty-four. So this is utilizing that same contractor that we had, had utilized last year, was a little bitter last year, and he's going to continue to honor those same unit prices from the low bid last year. Uh, plus he was great, you know, we, we had nothing but real good things to say about him, so. And that's really what, what it asks the, the council for tonight is to approve, approve the project, knowing that the contractor cost would be around eighty-eight thousand dollars. It gave you the material costs there to show you what the, what the costs are, but I believe everything that we need for these projects is on hand.
But we'll have to reorder it.
But you have to, of course, from stock.
If we can get it.
So we start reordering that stuff right now? What, do you recommend that?
As needed, we're sitting really good on, on cable and duct. There, there, you ask quite a bit of that right now.
Make a motion, please. Second?
My second.
We'll call.
Hey, Willman?
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
There we go, street project.
Yeah. So in the, in the pack, you'll actually see some, some quotes from three different providers, which is a little unusual, we struggle usually to get two bids. And we do have, have quotes from, from three of the providers. I tell you, the high bid there from Inroads. Inroads was the, was the company that had the plant set up out at, at Halbot's. You thought we might get a, a nice bid from them, and that they were, they were still high. Blacktop Service is, is the firm that has, we, we have worked with them for years, you know, and they, and they've done a nice enough job for us, no problems. Midwest Coatings would be, would be something new, I think it's a smaller, smaller firm, and so, as you think about what we had proposed during budget time about projects was really just three blocks. So it's Sixth Street from, from High to Madison, so that's on the north side of my house. And then Seventh Street from High to Jackson, so it's just the, the two blocks there. Really just, just three blocks, and we had budgeted the seventy, seventy-eight thousand dollars for it. You see what the, what the costs are there though. And low cost from, from Midwest Coatings, a hundred and two thousand, and then Blacktop Service was pretty close at a hundred and eight thousand. Again, we had budgeted seventy-eight thousand. Now, we had budgeted things kinda based upon what we've done in the past, which would be to, to mill a couple inches off of the side and then, and off of each side and then relay two inches. So you're relaying two inches into the gutter, keeps them in the same height as the gutter, but you're probably not milling the center, and you're adding a little bit more additional crown to it. So we've done that, like down on West Street, that's what we would have done down there. This proposal though says three inches, mill three inches out of the entire thing and replace three inches. And you wanna talk about that a little bit?
Like the guy from Midwest Coatings, you know, 'cause I had asked him about why, you know, Scott said two inches before, and they recommend three inches because then it lasts longer. They will put the crown back, of course, but their recommendation was three inches. And not two inches.
The two inches we put on Seventh Street, I noticed there's a few cracks going on that already, so. Not very many, but you know, you can see.
Yeah, the cracks will come up through the new asphalt. Move faster with the two inch compared to the three inch.
We know about cracks.
Sure do.
Little crack too.
So I guess a couple of things on that. I mean, if you wanna continue to look at the, at the three inches, knowing, knowing that the price is a little bit above budget. We, we would have funds, we would just, we'd need you to authorize, transfer more funds out of the general fund in order to pay for it. But we would have the funds that, that we could certainly do this if you wanted. So a couple of things. Would you, would you look at the low bid with the new company we've never looked at, or would you look at, at using Blacktop Service, which we've had pretty good luck with over the years? And there's just shy of six thousand dollars difference between the two bids. And the other thing, which I would advocate for, and it's an additional cost, but I would advocate for it anyways, just we can work with them on this, on this quote price that, that they've given us, but we would request a, a bond to go with that and, and figure that that bond's gonna add two or three percent. And look, probably add a two-year maintenance one.
Can we have any information on these new guys? Any recommendations?
How do we not, not done each check on them?
Well, they don't look like a fly-by-night outfit on the letterhead.
They got a nice letter.
Yeah, I saw that.
And you, what does Dean think?
I haven't looked at both of them, I, I've, I've, I've never seen anything from Midwest Coatings before. He was very knowledgeable about the projects up there on Lake Horseshoe and stuff. On how, why that rock did not sit, he was very knowledgeable about it. We talked about it. That their pack oil got too dry before they put the rock on. He was very, like, you know, if you look at it, it's kinda got them jagged edges look on Horseshoe. He said that is, if he wouldn't have done that, he would have had it nice and clean. He talks like he knows what he's doing. You know, Blacktop Service, they've been around in this area for a long time.
Blacktop's Blacktop, right?
What's that?
Blacktop is Blacktop.
Are they the, are they the ones that did, uh, up by you?
Yeah, that would have been the project from two years ago.
And had all that rock all over the place?
I, who did, who did that?
Blacktop did the asphalt and the seal coat.
Yep.
Yep. You know, if, I guess, if you wanna take a look at Midwest Coatings, we, we don't need to make a decision tonight, we can do some, some reference checks.
Get some references.
I think so.
I'd like that, yes. It'd be nice to have another choice.
Couple of things on that.
Yeah, can find out where the places are that they did some work, and I can travel down there and take a look at it. Yeah, road trip.
Couple of things. Our other project that we are proposing for this year is to do the north, north half of Lake Shore Drive. When we did the south half, we were able to design the project basically in-house and, and bid it out that way. As we look at it, at doing that same thing this year, I know Dean and I have had, have had some a lot of discussion about that, about technically being, being able to do that and how we would go about establishing grade or anything like that, we'd struggle with that. So if, if we were to look at bidding this and coming up with the spec ourself, our spec would, would be pretty simple. That we would, you know, come up with what the spec is for the, for the concrete and all that good stuff, but it would be, replace it at its current site. And basically a current grade with contractor being responsible for establishing grade. Okay? Now, that may or may not be the, is the best way to, to approach things. And as I was talking with, with Dale more about this too, that he would, Dale would, would recommend that the city would take a look at engineering that part.
I feel the same way, I mean, there's a lot of driveways back there and, things you gotta, you know, get the water flow in the right direction. I, I just think it needs to be engineered out. I mean, you know, we had an engineer at, at school, they screwed it up, but at least, you know, we had grounds to come back on them now.
It, uh, if, if this is something that, that we wanted to do and we would let a project locally, we'd figure it out and we'd be able to do it. But it'd be, certainly.
I got another question, what's the infrastructure like underneath that road? Water and sewer older than the hills?
Yeah, um, yeah, nothing's ever been done, done with that, you know, and when we did the south half, you know, as far as.
Time to look at that.
We did, we did, not do that one, we did the south half, we didn't replace any of the stuff. There were some new storms who were put in, but that was it. Just that is, you know, when, just as you're thinking about money, you know, I suppose if we'd look at, at engineering this project, I would just anticipate that it'd cost double about what our, what our estimate is by the time we pay an engineer and the, and the project would cost more. But by doing, doing, by rights, that's the right way to do it.
What's it cost us if we don't do it right? Don't know what it costs us.
Yeah, I might have to go back again at some point and do something. I know, like the one manhole back there, when I came, they said they were down there every other week jetting or cleaning that manhole. Well, last year, you know, we kinda had CIT come in and grind out some of that, bottom of that manhole and stuff and you know, kinda get that flow straightened out a little bit, and they did. Did really good job. Is it perfect? No. Should that manhole be replaced? I would say probably yes. So, you know, it's do it right first time.
Don't start, how many?
I said, we're three hundred thousand.
I wouldn't, I just wouldn't doubt, it, it would become extremely expensive.
Extremely.
So I'm just, I mean, we could certainly go down that, that path if, if you'd like, it's just gonna be very expensive.
And we didn't budget on three hundred thousand.
Well, also, you know, and we can, we can take some proposals from a couple of engineers and, and really get some thoughts on that. And, and see how much that would cost for, for their design, but yeah, just anticipate that, of course, it'd be much more expensive.
Because we haven't done a project ever that we tore the sewer water underneath other than Main Street, it's the only project we ever did that we from top to bottom.
Yeah, you're, I mean, I think years ago they probably did that up Fifth Street when they repoured that, but that's been decades ago.
Yeah, it's more. So do you guys wanna assist some proposals from an engineer? What the council would like to do?
I personally would like to. I'd feel more comfortable. You know, because if we don't, then we have a problem. We spend more money.
Pay me now or pay later?
Exactly.
Well, get some proposals and we'll bring it back up. Yep. See what we're at.
I got one other thing on that.
You wanna talk about John Regland?
Yeah.
That'll be good.
As you're thinking about concrete street there in the north end of, uh, of Lake Shore Drive, take a look please at page twenty-six. So, a concrete contractor for John Regland contacted me and they would like to be able to do a lot of concrete work on the north side of, of John's house. So can you envision where this is? This is the north house there on, on Lake Shore Drive. Just though in, in rough terms, the north property line is about the north side of the, uh, of the steps entering the house. So basically the north side of the house is about where the north property line is. The, uh, given that the slab of concrete going down to the, uh, to the lake there, that, uh, that whole slab basically would be on, on city property. The concrete contractor had, had asked me about replacing that stuff. And then as you look at the, at the deck down there on the lake, they wanna redo their entire deck down there, which they're certainly entitled, entitled to do what they would wanna do there. It's just a question of what would happen if this would roll over onto city property. So this concrete, existing concrete there, uh, some of that is on city property. And when you flip to the next page, a lot of that parking area there then, north, directly north of the house, is on city property. But you can see how, how cracked it is and whatnot, he would like to replace that. And flip one more page then, and you'll see my shadow there. And you, you can see the property pin right to the right of my shadow. Okay, so that, can you, can you see where that's at? So again, it's roughly the north side of that, of that step access there. So basically the entire parking area there is on, on city property. They're asking about tearing that out to replace it. You know, they're asking whether they could do that or not. And I said, no, you, you wouldn't be able to do that. And then we would talk with the city council about that. You know, it, fact is, it's on, it's on city property.
Are the grandfathered in in any manner?
The existing stuff certainly is. You know, we have, it's been there for decades and we've never done anything about it.
So what would be the harm in replacing it and making it look a lot nicer?
Just say, boy, it's, they say it's a philosophical and legal issue about use of, of city property. Any, any legal opinion on that there, Dave?
The next guy wants the same thing. Want if it's already there.
Well, practical aspect of it is if it's city responsibility, we can't leave it like this from the start. And if we get involved, there's gonna be a lot, I mean, I was trying to figure this out. But actually, you know, as far as, uh, grandfathered in, I'd have to know when they put it in. I'm assuming it's been multiple, twenty years ago.
Oh, yeah.
And, uh, the time doesn't run against the, the city, so the only argument they could have would be that they had got the right to maintain it because it's grandfathered in due to digging there that long. But it bears looking into, obviously.
So your advice is to let them do that or not let them do that?
Or look into it.
I can look into it, but, you know. So there's a specific request if they want to maintain or upgrade and maintain the construction?
They, they would look at, at some changes, so, um.
Expand the deck, right?
Yeah, you know, when you think about that parking area up on top, they would just look to at least tear that out and replace it, but of course they've, if given the chance, they'd love that to be bigger. But it's likely just replacing the, the one that's there. And then the other, the other part, and I didn't give a real good picture about what it looks like on the front, but as, as that sidewalk goes down, I'm on page twenty-six, and as the sidewalk goes down to the lake, you see the deck off to the right side. You know, the request was to enlarge the deck out to, to have, uh, that's, to be the same location of where that existing sidewalk goes down to. I guess I'd have a really tough time thinking that there should be allowed any additional changes to enhance, to enlarge a private, a private use on public land. Yeah, may, maybe you guys could see it as replacing like for like is, is one thing, but, uh.
Yeah, no. I think it was broke that hard on the, making it bigger than it already is, then I guess I, that wouldn't be a good deal.
It's a no-go.
You know, but replacing like for like and improving something that, like Dave says, could be a hazard.
Is there a liability issue if we deny all of it, things that's on city property now?
Well, if, uh, yeah, because we're gonna have to probably remove what's there. If we're going to leave what's there, I don't know about these steps with these cracks causing concern just for.
If somebody were falling, it's city property.
And then drainage, I don't know what it's doing, I mean, doesn't look good though.
Oh, yeah, this, the thing's been added on too many times too, over the years.
But if we maintain at least the parking area, we'd have to make it equivalable to a street.
And that's the other, that's the other thing. If you want to take a look at, at allowing them to do this, uh, that parking area, there's some questions about how it incorporates into the street project. And you may not want that done until we would design what the street project would be.
Is that electrical grade for the core here, the bottom?
Yeah.
Did they buy this house with this condition?
Um. How long have they been? I, I think they added on to it after they bought it, but that, it's been quite a few years. They've owned it probably for close to thirty now.
Yeah, I know John real well, I remember when he bought it.
Do we want to let him fix what's broken, not expand the deck? Is that, which ways the council wanna go? Well, there's not allowing anything?
Again, I don't know if we should allow anything until we have our street project done so that they're, their parking area meets up with our street.
Is there any alternative access to this house other than this?
They, they have all those zills for parking.
That whole street's got it, huh?
Yeah, it's.
It's barely a street and no parking. Otherwise we'll just wait till we get the street project done, let them know.
So are you, are you looking for an additional opinion from our, from our attorney or?
Let me look, yeah, let me look and see what our alternatives are, but, uh, off the top of my head, I'd say either we own it or we don't. If we own it, we have to maintain it, so.
We'd have to, you know, get rid of that crappy cement.
We do or they can make it work.
If we're gonna take, if the city owns the property, we have to maintain it up to safety specifications. Because if we own it and someone falls, stumbles and falls down there, trips all these cracks and I don't know what this is, I'd have to look, I wanna look at it, but.
It's, you're not advocating that we were responsible for replacing this, are you?
No.
Because, I mean, if we're responsible for not having a, uh, not having a hazard there, we just remove the hazard.
Right, right.
And just bring it up to grade with the park there, whatever that is.
Well, I guess what I've heard so far is about, uh, have Dave give us, give us an opinion about status of that, but that we would certainly not look at any, any construction until it coincided with the street project.
Right. Thanks. So the municipal report?
Yeah, just, uh, things on, on that budget amendment. I know we had, we went through this at the, the last council meeting about the expenses. And when you look at the legal reasons for having to do a budget amendment, it is just the expenses. You just can't overspend what the, uh, what the budgeted amount is. But, I don't, I've also then, uh, reestimated the, uh, the revenues to go along with it so that we can have a, an accurate representation of what any fund balance is then. So I'm on page thirty. And this, uh, this would be the explanation of why things are the way they are as it appears for the budget in, uh, budget amendment in the paper. Okay, so there'd be, uh, twenty-three thousand dollars of, of additional, um, revenue in the other city taxes line item there. That's, uh, ten thousand additional for hotel motel, thirteen thousand for, uh, local option sales tax. Okay, and, and intergovernmental, see that one is, uh, revenues are down. And that has a lot to do with the, the community center, timing of the community center construction, that it's reduced by the amount of, of what we would have anticipated for community center grants to be in this current year. But then it's also offset by, uh, revenues coming in for the fish fair. Jumped down then to that, the negative one hundred and fourteen thousand. That also is related to, uh, the community center about private giving there. And not that, not that we haven't received that funds, it just has to do with, with the timing of the construction project, that we would, would have the revenues and the expenses timed out to be in this, in the same period. We don't propose the expenses for this, uh, for this current budget year, so, uh, we would take the revenues out then also. Uh, see the charges for fees and services have gone up significantly, a hundred thou, a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. And those are fees from Camp Crescent, as well as some electric, uh, increased electric usage. A lot of that is, is, uh, industrial demand. We had that, uh, had that asphalt plant out, out at, uh, Halitz for most of last year and it was a pretty big industrial user, so our, our fees were up a little bit. Then the, the revenues in for transfers, there it is, a transfer, it's two hundred thousand is that transfer for the, uh, the debt to TIF. And then also, uh, some transfers for, for the twenty-five thousand for pickleball, some additional, uh, revenues to pay off the deficit there on cabin projects and, and green infrastructure. So those are the, the revenue side. The expenses are, are what we went through last time, uh, too. So let's, I guess, hit those real quick about, uh, culture, culture and recreation, that's just ten thousand dollars, was park supplies. Community and economic development, two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars was the Evapco water main and the, uh, and the Jacobson incentive. And then general government, there's some additional fees there about Outlet Twenty, uh, cost and the environmental stuff at Outlet Twenty that was all paid for out of, out of that, uh, function. Capital projects, again, the, it's a net decrease in expenditures because we're not posing to, uh, to spend money for the community center. But then there was some additional expense there about Outlet Twenty engineering and then purchasing back home. The, the biggest, uh, increase in, in expenses is in the, what's called the business type of enterprises, that's our, our, uh, utilities. They're all lumped into there. And we did have increased expenses, then some increased water expenses, but it's primarily electric expenses. And primarily then, uh, those increased costs on inventory and wholesale power. Okay, and then the two hundred and fifty-three thousand about the debt from, uh, electric improvement and the pickleball and the cabin and the green infrastructure. So see, that's, uh, revenue and, uh, and expense for that then also. Next couple of pages really just were intended to show that as we thought about these, uh, budget amendments, as we were working through our budget process earlier in the year, they were really all being thought of at the time because we had reestimated the amount about what we thought we were gonna be receiving and expending. So we use a reestimated amount during, during the, uh, during the budget process, but this would just formalize that through amendment. Page thirty-three then is what was actually, what is actually showing, gonna show up in the paper when it comes out tomorrow, this will, that will be published there. And then council will have a public hearing on that during the meeting on the sixteenth. Um, any, any questions on budget amendment?
We do this every year.
We, it's, yeah. Couple of other things then for you, um, about the, the Economic Development Administration, the EDA grant that we are receiving for that Evapco water main project. Okay, so we're still on hold on that as we're getting this archaeological study that's required by the federal government. Okay? And there really actually been, been very tragic, uh, circumstances around this that the, uh, the guy who we had hired to do the archaeological study actually passed away here within the past month. You know, he's a, and he's a one-man organization in, in his business, had substantial amount of work done on our study, but not, didn't have it all done. And, uh, we've had some correspondence with his wife who basically says, you know, it's time to find another, another consultant. So we have, found another consultant, entered into an agreement with them because they were quickly able to turn around. They'll be out next week to do the field work on that and would have the, the report done in the next couple of weeks after that, so. About eight hundred dollars more expensive than what we had been before, but, uh, we need to get this thing going. Shoreline cleanup on Saturday and.
Starts at eight?
Eight o'clock. And you and Whitey are able to drive?
Yeah, I'm just gonna grill. They are gonna be streaming it.
No, they're gonna grill until it's all figured out.
Oh, okay. We want the new trucks.
Who's driving the big one?
Why you? You don't make any.
Well, we'll take a crash, we'll take a crash course once.
Just have the tailgates tipped down so I don't have to do it.
Yeah, okay.
That'll be a good idea.
Hey, our, our last, uh, item on the agenda tonight would have been an employment hearing. Our employee has chosen not to, uh, not to show up. We would not consider the employment hearing, that had been as one opportunity then.
Anything else? Otherwise we'll have to adjourn. We'll make a motion. If you have a second, you can adjourn. Let's second it.
All right, thank you everybody.